Thank you, Councilman Webb. I'll call the City Council meeting for March 24th, 2009 to order. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Okay, do we have a closed session report from the City Attorney's Office?
We do, Mr. Mayor. Multiple matters were discussed in closed session, all of which are reflected on our open session agenda. No reportable action was taken except with respect to Harvey versus City of Newport Beach. The council voted to authorize trial counsel, SEL, to file post-trial motions and to instruct its staff to bring back the issue of an appeal should those post-trial motions not be successful and that matter pass seven zero. In addition, the council authorized the office of the city attorney to file a tolling action against the Coastal Commission just simply to protect the statute limitations with respect to our amendment to the CLUP and to hold that action pending Coastal Commission action at their April meeting and to not serve unless otherwise directed by council. That was passed seven zero as well. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Gardner, followed by the invocation by Reverend Martha S. Corianic of St. Michael and All Angels of His School Church?
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we bow our heads, we lift up our hopes for this meeting tonight, that we might share and listen openly and honestly, that we might work through any cares or concerns of our community, and that we might use our time, our many talents, and the multitude of blessings of Newport Beach to best serve the people who live, work, and visit this beautiful place. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. We have one presentation this evening. It's a proclamation for National Library Week at your library. Who's here to sit there? There you are. Do you want to come up to the podium? I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas libraries play a vital role in supporting the quality of life in Newport Beach, and libraries are changing and dynamic places, providing people with the information, resources they need to enjoy life, live, learn, and work in the 21st century. And libraries are places for opportunity, education, self-help, and lifelong learning. And libraries bring you a world of knowledge, both in person and online. And libraries and library supporters across America are supporting National Library Week. Now therefore, I, Edward Selich, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, do hereby proclaim the week of April 12th to the 18th, 2009, as National Library Week at your library, and encourage all residents to take advantage of the wonderful library resources available in our community and the special programs planned for National Library Week at the Newport Beach Public Library and witness whereof. I have here in two set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Newport Beach to be affixed this 24th day of March, 2009. Edward Selich, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd like to put a plug in for storytime on both the 14th and the 18th. If you'd like to see Giorgio, your young kids would like to see Giorgio talk about all the tasks he has. Bring your kids to the storytime and they'll be amazed.
Are you Giorgio?
It's a guy that wears a lot of hats.
We do thank you for this proclamation, and also I am very much looking forward to National Library Week to see all these story hours that all of you council members at home have agreed to come and do for us. So it's going to be a great week and we invite everyone to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like place on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Point of affirmation, Mr. Mayor, there are three yellow cards at the desk here, and I would like to address one of the items of this on your study calendar this afternoon. I don't know what the appropriate time to do that is, but I'd like to present these three cards to the city.
You can do that under public comments, sir.
Thank you.
Right, on non-agenda items. Okay, Councilwoman Daigle?
Yes, a couple of things to report. The Boys and Girls Club in East Bluff completed their remodel, and they're back with a full slate of programming in addition to their many leagues of basketball that they're kind of noted for. They're also going to be offering some computer classes. So with the assistance of the city, they've set up a computer lab, and they also have a room for homework. And then on April 21st, the police department and the city and the Newport Mesa School District have worked in cooperation to present Keep Your Teen Safe. And we did this program last year. It was very well attended, and parents have a good resource in terms of the challenges faced by their teenagers. And so there's information connected to drunk driving, suicide, social networking on the Internet. And so that's going to be April 21st, 6:30 PM at Newport Harbor High School, so I hope you can make it. Thanks.
Councilwoman Gardner?
Yes, I'm going to give everybody a moment to get their pencils. I want you to write this down. Saturday, May 9th, is going to be the Echo Fabulous Fashion Show. This is put on by some students from Sage Hill High School. And the presentation they did to the Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee was really amazing. They have put together this tremendous day. It's going to be at the Newport Coast Community Center. They're going to have vendors there showing all the latest in old-fashioned materials made out of plastic bottles, I mean, re-moded, of course. And then there will be a dinner, silent auction, music, and you can go find more information on at the Inside the Outdoors Foundation website. Any money raised will go towards their programs, which bring under-resourced children out to the outdoors for adventure and play. So, May 9th, Saturday.
Thank you, Councilman Webb. Councilman Henn.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm regularly impressed by the breadth and depth of activities that are going on all the time in our city, most of which are free, actually. And one caught my eye that I thought I'd just mentioned to the public at home. There will be a presentation on the Wildcats of Orange County on April 2nd at 6:30 PM at the Peter and Mary Muth Interpretive Center. And they'll show us the difference between a bobcat and a mountain lion and learn what may be in your backyard. So I thought that particularly caught my eye. It might be something of interest, and it's just a great example of the kinds of things that you can do that may just well be pretty interesting around this city, and it doesn't cost you a darn thing. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Proton Curry?
On recent Saturdays, I was pleased to join with Councilmember Daigle for the opening of Little League season. We have hundreds of young people throughout Newport Beach who participate in Little League, and the city provides a great venue for that, and it was great to see everybody out for the opening of the season. Also, this past Saturday, I was honored to participate with the Newport Beach J.C.'s and their annual installation banquet. This is an organization of approximately 70 young professionals who are really focused on giving back through things like the Relay for Life and other charitable contributions to the city. And I was really very excited to see the energy in the room and what this group of civic-minded young people are involved in to make our community better. As you know, Councilmember Daigle has been very active in flagging for us the opportunities for bay dredging funds coming through the stimulus bill. It's important to note also that the bill contains several block grant titles relative to streets and roads, police, energy efficiency, and clean water. So what I'd like to do is ask staff to come back with a report on the various potential funding sources through the stimulus legislation and the recently enacted federal spending bill, and the potential applicability of those sources here in Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no announcements this evening. Madam Clerk?
Consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar, items 1 through 7, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss the consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Councilman Henn?
I have nothing.
Councilman Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Proton Curry?
No, I have none.
Councilwoman Daigle?
None.
Councilwoman Gardner?
Nothing.
Councilman Webb?
None.
And I have none. Staff, do you have any to pull?
Nothing.
Okay, does anyone from the public want to pull anything from the consent calendar? Please step forward and state your name, please, and the item.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'd like to comment on item 6.
Item 6. Any other items?
That's Laura Curran.
Laura Curran? Thank you, Laura.
Move approval of the consent calendar, items 1 through 7 except for item 6.
Okay, thank you.
Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, the item pulled is item number 6, Budget Amendments, Surfing, Sailing, Tennis, Reserve Accounts.
My name is Laura Curran. I live in Newport Beach. I just wanted to ask a question about item 6, which calls for the allocation of 20% of the revenues from the Surfing, Sailing, and Tennis Reserve Accounts to some particular activities, i.e. resurfacing of tennis courts, surfing reserves accounts, purchasing of rec wear, software licenses, and in the Sailing Reserve, supplies and repairs for boats. And the total allocation is $49,000. So this allocation is probably a very legitimate allocation. So my questions are about additional information that a member of the public would probably need to know in order to understand the overall impact on the budget, such as, after reading a staff report, the 20% allocation allowed for in Policy B-2 from Surfing, Sailing, and Tennis courses can be allocated for equipment and other activities of this type. Does that 20% allocation equal $49,000? Secondly, how much, and that goes with this, how much revenue was generated from Surfing, Sailing, and Tennis in 2008, or the period in question, which would then help us understand if the 20% equals $49,000? If these allocations are made, there are remaining balances in Sailing, Surfing, and Tennis. And the question I would have is, what are those remaining balances, and how do those balances compare to prior years? So if we take these accounts down a certain amount, are we going to have other expenses that still may be necessary, and do we have the similar funding levels in the past for similar expenses? And there is a note in B-2, the amendment, that says that tennis, surf, and sailing courses are meant to be self-supporting. In my understanding, most of the courses have some subsidy within the city, but so the question is, are tennis, surf, and sailing self-supporting? To me, that means 100%, but what is the bar? And finally, why is this request being made now rather than in the budget period? So again, this is probably a very legitimate allocation. It will help us keep those facilities in good shape, so we can all use them. We'd just like to have some more light on how these allocations are arrived at and the sources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you paint your house?
Yes.
I rode my bike by today.
Okay, any other speakers on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to council. Mr. City Manager, are you prepared to address those questions at this time?
Well, we'll find out whether I'm prepared or not. But let me start out by saying that the sum of the money, the 20% council policy, is based upon the gross annual revenues that are derived from these programs. So it isn't necessarily 20% of the reserves. I think by quick addition, it comes to about $48,000 that is asked to be transferred out of the reserves, and there's approximately $280,000 that's in the reserve. So that is a little less than 20%, but it's 20% of the gross annual revenues from the previous year, I believe. So why the 20% and why do we still have substantial reserves, such as the $170,000 that is in the Surfing Reserve? It is because there may be come a time where we need to replace all of our Sabbaths, or we need to do a major project, and we could come to the city council, and you could authorize that as far as a CIP program. This recommendation, based upon Policy B-2, comes to you at this time every year in order to prepare for the summer program. And to make sure that the tennis work that's done, whether it's replacing fences, whether it's resurfacing courts, gets in the CIP and is a part of the CIP. But for the Sailing, it's to make sure that we do replace the needed equipment in order to provide the Sailing programs that you asked about earlier today. And Surfing is to replace surfboards. Basically, we're not talking about, you know, instructor cost or anything like that. It is equipment costs that are being replaced. So that's the questions as I remember them.
Okay, any discussion?
More approval. Second.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
May I just suggest that to the extent that perhaps not all of Laura's questions were answered or adequately, perhaps Dennis Daner could give Laura a call and fill her in on anything else that she's interested in.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Henn. All right, we're going to move to item number nine now under public hearings. It's a time-certain public hearing that was set for 7:15. And this is Appeal of, excuse me, Appeal of the Hearing Officers, Continuance of Use Permit Hearing.
How come we're going leaping to that? Don't we have one issue before that?
It's a time-certain hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, that's on the agenda.
I thought we're continuing it to a time-certain.
No, this is Ocean Recovery. Anyway, this is Use Permit 2008-030115, West Balboa Boulevard, Ocean Recovery, PA 2008-101. And I'll turn it over to the city attorney at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would, if I may, have some preliminary comments. This is, as the council knows, the very first appeal under our Use Permit Ordinance that governs residential uses, group homes, and that alike. The ordinance was originally adopted last year, is 2008-05. This is an appeal based upon the hearing officer's determination as to 1115 West Balboa Boulevard, otherwise known as the Ocean Recovery Facility. In effect, the hearing officer held a hearing, appropriate hearing, under the Use Permit Ordinance and provisions, and made a decision based upon discussions at that time to continue the matter for six months under the provisions that were discussed at the hearing. You're faced with some unique issues here. One, it's the first time you've heard one of these appeals. Two, it's a unique potential for appeal, and that's an issue I will discuss in a moment. Three, you're facing a very unique standard of review, and what we call in the law the standard of review. So I'd like to take a moment to discuss those things. And fourth, you've got multiple roles being played in this situation for you on behalf of the city and through staff. First of all, let me address the roles. I'm the city attorney. I have been ethically walled off, which means I'm not involved in the Use Permit process. I don't get involved in the hearings. I don't get involved in making staff recommendations. I don't argue those cases. I'm kept at a spot where I'm not involved in that administrative procedure so that I can, one, be involved in representing and advising the council without being conflicted as a result of those hearings. I would affirm that ethical wall. I would point out that we have ethical boundaries within our office, that the Use Permit files are all locked up. I don't have access to the application files. I don't have them in our computer or not, and I don't engage in discussions with staff, applicants, or appellants specifically on the merits of what's going on at the Use Permit process. That allows me to proceed forward and represent the council and make recommendations and deal with the legal issues you're faced with on appeal, and that's what I need to do tonight. You're faced with an interesting appeal here. It was filed on behalf of an interested third party who had fully had the grounds to appeal. He was present at the hearings. When you're faced with a unique question as to whether or not this appeal is truly appealable. Under your ordinance, a decision by a hearing officer is what can be appealed to you. The decision is described as a decision to approve, conditionally approve, or disapprove a Use Permit application. In this situation, it's questionable that, for interpretation purposes, as to what actually happened at that hearing and whether that is a decision. It's not a question as to what the hearing officer did. He continued the matter for six months pursuant to the discussion of the staff and the applicant. The question is whether that action is a decision that's appealable under your ordinance. I conducted an extensive review of the ordinances to see if there was any kind of direction that could assist me in informing you as to whether it's a decision that's appealable, and found nothing that's really conclusive. You're really faced with interpreting the nature of the action by the hearing officer. If you interpret the action by the hearing officer as effectively being a decision to approve, conditionally approve, or disapprove an application for a Use Permit, then it is a decision that is appealable, and you have the right and the power to take action under your appellate procedures here. There are a couple of arguments that I've heard. I will point out, one side would say that this is just a continuance. If it's a continuance, then it's traditionally recognized in civil procedure that a continuance, a simple continuance, is not a final action, and therefore, it's not appealable. On the other hand, there's another argument that it's more than a continuance. It's in fact sort of a de facto grant of a Use Permit, a temporary Use Permit, to be sure, but a de facto grant of a Use Permit. If that's your interpretation of the action of the hearing officer, then it's an appealable decision, and you would have jurisdiction or the power to take action on that appeal. And if it's an appealable decision, then you're faced with, what's the standard of review? Like I said, this is a unique standard of review. Our ordinance was drafted so that the hearing officer would have the freedom to make appropriate decisions based upon the objective facts and information provided at the hearing. It's in order to give them as much room to hear the cases and make determinations as if they were a trial court. In other words, they sit like, in fact, a superior court judge, and they make all decisions of fact and applications of law in that context based upon their record. Then if appealable decision comes to you, you review that decision for substantial evidence, not de novo. Now, what's that mean? Your traditional standard of review used in most Use Permit hearings that you're comfortable in handling in the past is what we call de novo, new, as if there was no decision made before you. You get to make a decision at your complete discretion either to, you know, grant the permit, condition the permit, or disapprove the permit. But that's not the issue before you tonight. Assuming that this is an appealable decision, and you conclude that it is, the only question before you is whether or not the hearing officer had substantial evidence to make the decision to arguably grant a de facto temporary Use Permit. It's not whether the facility should be there. It's not whether citizens have a specific reason to complain or be concerned about the facility. It's not whether the facility is a great operation or not and should get its Use Permit. The question is whether or not, from the record at the hearing, which is the transcript and all the documents that you've been provided, there is any evidence that supports the hearing officer's decision. So while it would be tempting to testify or offer evidence that one side or the other, either that it's a good facility and should be granted a Use Permit, or offer testimony that it's a bad facility and should be denied a Use Permit, that question's really not before you. The real question is whether or not the hearing officer had evidence presented to him which would support the decision to continue it six months. So while I, obviously, we want to conduct a fair hearing, I would just caution yourselves and the public that what we're addressing is, one, whether it was an appealable decision, so it wasn't a decision at all; two, whether the evidence submitted in the record at the appealing, excuse me, the hearing officer position was substantial and supports that decision. All right, if you conclude that the evidence supports that decision, you would uphold the continuance for six months. If you conclude that the evidence does not support that decision, you would remand that decision, or you would find that it wasn't supported. You have the option to remand at that time, back to the hearing officer, to set a hearing within a reasonable length of time, whatever that is, in order to allow the parties to be able to put on their case, and to make a substantive decision on the case. But since the question that was appealed is whether it should have been continued and not whether it should be granted a Use Permit, the question before you tonight is not whether the facility should get a Use Permit or not, but whether or not the hearing should have been continued six months. That's if you feel it's an appealable decision. And as my father would say, now that it's clear as mud, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to address it. My recommendation is to handle this as we would handle any public hearing, allowing the appellant and then the applicant to testify, open it for public testimony, and then allow the appellant and applicant to close briefly at the end if they had something they had to address. But first, before opening the public testimony, I would ask that staff present to you what happened at the hearings, so that you're fully briefed on what occurred.
Okay, well, first, let's see if there's any questions. Do you have any questions of the city attorney at this time? Okay, seeing none, staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm going to very briefly go over how the hearing was set up and then talk briefly about the deliberations that the hearing officer had with staff. And by staff, I mean myself and Kathy Walcott, representing the city attorney's office. Special counsel was there as well. That was Kit Bobco with Richard Swatson-Gershon. So you'll get a taste of how each of these hearings have been going. Basically, we start with a presentation by staff. We describe to the public how the agenda works, how there's an opportunity for the applicant to speak. Then public comment is open, then the applicant can return to rebut or clarify things. Then we do have a dialogue between the applicant and the hearing officer when the hearing officer decides whether or not to approve or deny, or continue a hearing to a date certain. Those are the alternatives we propose to him. In this case, it's Tom Allen, who's the hearing officer for the group residential uses. So on this particular date, we had two items for Ocean Recovery, Women's Facility at 1601 West Balboa, and then the subject of the discussion tonight is 1115 West Balboa. It's a men's facility. So I start by going over what the ordinance says. You folks are very familiar with that. And then we talk specifically about the case before us. And in this case, I think it is important to remind you about the case as well because it plays into why the hearing officer did what he did. So Ocean Recovery's men's facility is at 1115 West Balboa. One of the things we focus on, your ordinance focuses on, the proximity to other uses, and as that may relate to the American Planning Association standard within our ordinance of one or two uses per block. This facility at 1115 has a home that is subject to, has been abated at 1129 West Balboa. It also has an approved home across the street. That's Balboa Horizons. It has a home that's in the appeal process at 1216 West Balboa, across the street and up, and that's Newport Coast Recovery. So you could see the proximity, especially to this facility at 1129.
You say "abated." What do you mean?
1129 is a home that did not apply for a Use Permit and has not applied for reasonable accommodation. They received then our abatement letter, and we have, I'm not familiar with where we are specifically with that inspection, but it's my understanding that that house has ceased to operate as a group residential use. And abatement means closure, per the ordinance. Homes were required to abate by February 22nd. That's roughly a year after the ordinance was adopted. That's roughly a year after the ordinance was adopted, if they didn't get a use permit or didn't go through the, within the application process. The next thing we do in the hearing is we present the findings chart. And this is, in order to get a use permit, you need to, we need to successfully say yes when we ask the question, can each of 11 findings be made? And in some cases, you see this column here, we talk about whether the finding can be made without conditions. In this column here, we propose conditions that would potentially allow those findings to be made. So we go through this with each one. So we went through the findings chart and then we began the deliberation. And the staff, this is what staff asserted, that we could not definitively ascertain if problems attributed to 1115 West Balboa came from 1115 West Balboa versus the home at 1129 West Balboa. We did consider, I phrase this a specific way, that some of the allegations, especially those that surfaced late, the day before the hearing, two days before the hearing, were serious enough to preclude us from making key findings. And again, with that bullet point number one, we weren't sure if those problems were associated with 1129 or 1115. And we were seeking a way to allow more time to pass. Remember, this hearing was February 12th. The abatement order for 1129 was February 22nd. So we were seeking a way to allow more time to pass, including seeing if that abatement 1129 addressed problems in the area. So the hearing officer listened to what we said, and this is what he said, and this is within your transcript, which I believe is an attachment to the document. He thought that a test period was worth consideration because this use permit, quote, "was a very difficult one." He said, "I'm not persuaded it's a good idea to issue a use permit at this time because it becomes a vested right." And he said, "What I would much prefer to see us do, as staff alluded to, was continue this for six months." So with that, I'll stop there. If you have any specific legal questions about what may have arisen and what he dealt with at the time, Deputy City Attorney Kathy Walcott is here for that.
Okay. Councilwoman Curt, did you have something?
The idea to defer for six months in order to make this assessment, did that originate with staff?
It did, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, don't see any.
All right. I would add that when we were reviewing whether or not this was a continuance versus a decision, we looked at it afterwards. We looked at it before as well. We did consult with outside counsel to discuss whether or not this would be a permissible action. Some of the differences we find between a continuance and a use permit, continuance, obviously, is a procedural matter in our view. A use permit is a land use entitlement. Even a temporary use permit is a land use entitlement. Our code does not allow us to give temporary use permits in residential zones. We were not trying to do that. Staff's original recommendation was that a use permit be granted and that for the first six months, it be run at a reduced rate so that we could see what impact it had on the neighborhood and whether or not the applicant could handle it at that level. As more information came in from the public, and particularly at the public hearing where the residents made some very compelling arguments about specific impacts they had received in a non-discriminatory manner, we became more concerned and we became convinced that the continuance was the right way to go on this. We also talked to the planning department before making this recommendation and looked at other situations where lengthy continuances have been permitted. For example, when an applicant for a use permit needs to get a, say, an off-site parking agreement, there may be a continuance for six months. I've worked on some that took that long, in order to let them complete that process and fulfill their requirement. Other situations in which we've granted lengthy continuances have been when an applicant needs to go back and work on the design, or they need to work on access issues, or on point to this situation, when they need to work out some issues with neighbors. In this situation, we look at the totality of the circumstances, we look at the due process concerns, and we allow the maximum amount of due process we need in order to defend the hearing officers, the planning commissions, and the council's decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay. This is the procedure we're going to follow this evening. We're going to have the appellant come up first. He will have 10 minutes to present their case. Then we'll have the applicant come up. They will have 10 minutes to present their case. We'll open it to public comment. There'll be a three-minute limitation on public comments. Once public comments are concluded, then we'll have a closing statement by the rebuttal, by the appellant if they so wish, and then by the applicant if they so wish, and then bring it back to council for discussion. I would remind everyone to watch the blue box on the podium, that when the yellow light comes on, it means you have one minute left, so be mindful of that as you make your remarks. And at this time, I'll invite the appellant to come forward and state their name and make their presentation.
Hi. I'm Larry Mathena, M-A-T-H-E-N-A, and I am the appellant. Very briefly, to make this easier on everybody, and I've got nine there, I copied some key parts of the file to make it easier to follow. Before I get to my specific remarks, I just want to start out making the observation that despite the fact that people presumably are supposed to come here to talk purely of procedure, you've already been advocated. You've been advocated that the staff was worried about the fact that frankly, I was stuck with two group homes between me. I will tell you that's very difficult. I will also tell you every bit of evidence that was presented by the people surrounding 1115 West Balboa Boulevard was explicitly limited to West 1115, to Ocean Recovery. There was no evidence presented of 1129. To be honest with you, we could tell you far uglier stories, and not that the ones for 1115 were beautiful, but much harsher stories. So the city's initial presentation of facts, to me, is unfair and inappropriate out of the box. If they're going to advocate that the permit should be approved, and frankly, they have. They said, "Oh, we think it should have been approved. It should be approved for conditions." Then I think you need to let me advocate why it shouldn't be. And frankly, the key part of this is this permit should be denied, and that's the real reason why you shouldn't give them six months. And it's an easy thing to walk through. Specifically, I would simply like to see you folks enforce your ordinance and enforce it in a fair, impartial, and rational manner. And I need to come and say that to you because you're not. And you're not, in many, many respects. And when I walk through the requests that I have to make of you, you will see that to meet his standards, I will easily get to the point that there is substantial evidence to support what I'm requesting. First, you absolutely should reject the six-month probationary period. That really is what Hearing Officer Allen granted to Ocean Recovery. Why? Your law called for a facility to either be permitted or abated by February. Our community, our residents surrounding this facility have struggled with it for more than four years. Under your law, we didn't need to keep doing it another six months. If the law is fairly, impartially, and rationally applied, the use permit request should actually be denied. Why? Because under your law, at least four of the 11 findings required for the permit simply can't be made. In fact, in my handout to you, in my submission of February 2nd, 2009, which actually triggered a delay because suddenly somebody was saying, "Here's what these people can't meet," as opposed to, "Oh, we thought we'd grant them the permit." They pushed off the hearing a week to attempt to figure out what to do about it. At this hearing, you had a petition of 143 residents signing saying this facility did not deserve to be open. Above and beyond that, of the surrounding neighbors, all of them, 10 in total, provided specific testimonies stating why they had been a problem the entire period. My second problem is, again, I struggle with your enforcement of your law. If you go after my submission, the written text to the first one, picture one, I just want you to understand what you're dealing with. This is a picture from your approved facility at 1132 West Balboa Boulevard looking to a facility that you denied at 1216. That's me. Next picture I'm going to show you, if you go in your package, that's a picture from the same approved facility, okay? In front of Ocean Recovery, who are here now. A key finding for denying Newport Coast but approving Ocean Recovery is this one's far away, okay? But the prior one is too close. That's the way your ordinance is being enforced. There is room in your ordinance to say, if Newport Coast is too close, Ocean Recovery is too close too. Ocean Recovery is about 130 feet away from this licensed facility. Newport Coast is almost 600 feet away. Above and beyond that, the second thing I want to go on record about, and this too is a misleading statement put out there for you. You folks have been told, "Ooh, group homes, APA standard, one or two per block." You aren't dealing with a group home under the APA standard. You are dealing with a halfway house. A halfway house under the APA standard explicitly states that you can have a harsher application of rule against them because a group home implies more than six months, typically a year occupancy, instead of the revolving door of 30 to 90-day troubled people truly trying to get over the early part of their addiction. So for you to be told the standard is one or two homes per block for Ocean Recovery is wrong. And my point is, your law is not being applied in a fair, impartial, and rational manner. And again, focus on my picture and explain to me why that works either. My second request is that city staff and its legal counsel change the way they're doing this. Everything I've seen, and I've been to most of these hearings, and frankly, the reason I've gone to these hearings is because, yeah, I had a problem, but when I started going, nobody is saying and directly follow the law. I truly believe your staff and your council, only objective is to see that the ordinance is not overturned as opposed to enforcing it. Please, see that your ordinance is being enforced. It's not. It's not being enforced in this case because frankly, the use permit for Ocean Recovery should flat out be denied. Secondly, just so you understand how absurd this is getting, you had an RA hearing last week for 900 West Balboa Boulevard. The hearing officer, based on the input, direct input from attorneys specifically dealing with, "Ooh, is this going to survive analysis?" basically said a four-person unlicensed facility, a block and a half from these with nothing else going for it, is approved because of its unique characteristics. And its unique characteristics are that there's only four compared to six normally allowed for licensed facility. They're violating your zoning. Your zoning says the middle of the peninsula shouldn't have an unlicensed and shouldn't have an unlicensed for the bizarre, unique federal necessity of, oh, four is somehow better than six. That's what's going on. It's almost Alice in Wonderland-like. My third request is, in the case of this specific facility, that in terms of any decision made by the hearing officer, that the applicability of Municipal Code Section 209640, paragraph E2, be considered. It states that a use permit should be revoked if the applicant has made false or misleading statements of material fact or admission of material fact in the application for a permit. Specifically, Ocean Recovery stated at its hearing that its clients don't attend weekend NA and AA gatherings at the elementary school. The public presented evidence directly to the contrary. Ocean Recovery actually directly presented documentary evidence to the contrary.
One minute.
Finally, and there's others, thank you for letting me know. Fourth request is simple. Your law says, basically, no one wears, no one may smoke where secondhand smoke can be detectable outside the property. You folks think you passed this law so that people wouldn't deal with the big problem of smoking next door. For every use permit granted to date, this simple statement has not been made a condition of the use permit or even stated as a goal that must be achieved and be maintained in order to keep a use permit granted. So my fourth request is simple. If the hearing officer on remand does, despite the evidence on record against it, approve the Ocean Recovery permit request, please order the hearing officer to follow the law. Please tell him that a condition of approval must be, quote, "No secondhand smoke can be detectable outside the property," unquote. Please enforce the law and see that it's fairly enforced. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Councilwoman Gardner, I think, has a question.
Are you an attorney?
Yes. But I'm a contract attorney.
Oh, okay. That's all right. Very simply, you're in two or three sentences, why this was a decision and not a continuance, which is our first hurdle.
This was a decision and not a continuance because the examples given are very benign. I do understand use law. Don't apply. Specifically forcing the next-door neighbors to live with this for six more months because they were caught by surprise isn't fair. The decision was made. We're burdened by the equivalent of a decision being made. There's no difference.
Did you feel like it was kind of like, "I can't give you a CUP today, but I might be able to in six months"?
Yes. And in fact, just so you understand, from my perspective, all that's happened is they've dramatically emptied their building and are trying to be real low-key until then. And my final problem, by the way, with your law is nobody knows how to enforce it. I specifically asked a bunch of questions and was basically told, "We can't answer that. We don't know how many violations it would take to terminate. We don't even know, I couldn't even get a straight answer as to who I'd report problems to, and frankly, I don't necessarily see that it's going to be enforced." I struggle with this. And last thing, most of the reason I'm here, to cite being the neighbor, is if you do take the time to look at the testimony, the neighbors on the other side of us with young kids have had a horrific time. And basically, I will see this thing through because I feel like nobody is here explaining what the hell happened and how it happened. Pardon my language.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now hear from the applicant. Okay, no applause, please. Okay, again, you have 10 minutes and be mindful of that yellow light.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of city council. My name is Sean O'Connor. I am a resident of Newport Beach. I'm also a partner with the law firm of Shepherd, Mull, and Richter in Hampton, and we are council for Ocean Recovery. I'm going to start off by saying that, I'm going to say something that you don't often hear attorneys saying, and that is, I'm not going to need all the time allotted to me tonight. I would like to say also that with me is Jim McCloskey of Ocean Recovery. He can respond to any specific questions you may have. The reason I won't need all that much time this evening is because I'm going to resist the temptation to address some of the comments we just heard from the appellant, because I think those comments go to the merits of the application, which are not properly before you this evening. I think the staff report prepared by the city attorney did a good job of explaining the issues that are before you this evening. The first of those issues is, the simple question is, was this continuance of six months even a final decision that is subject to appeal? And as explained in my letter that I submitted earlier today and I requested be made part of the record, we contend, and I think that it is pretty clear with some analysis here, that it was not a final decision. As noted by the city attorney in the staff report, only final decisions are subject to appeal. And here, we did not have a final decision by the hearing officer. In fact, the hearing officer was very careful to- In fact, the hearing officer was very careful to not make a final decision. I think we can see this from the second and the third bullet points here. He was concerned about doing precisely what we've heard could have possibly been done, and that is issue a temporary use permit. The second bullet point there, I'm not persuaded it's a good idea to issue a use permit at this time. So he specifically was saying that he did not want to make a final decision. Instead, third bullet point, I much prefer to continue this for six months. As also alluded to in the staff report, what he was doing here is simply adopting a deal, an agreement that had been made by city staff, in fact, it was Mr. Kiff, in Ocean Recovery. And what happened toward the end of that hearing is Mr. Kiff was concerned about the status of the evidence that had been submitted to him. There were allegations that some of the problems could have been created not by clients of Ocean Recovery, but instead by clients of 1129. As Mr. Kiff explained earlier this evening, 1129 has now been abated. They are no longer operating. So Mr. Kiff said, and frankly, it made good sense to us at the time, if we can't tell right now what's going on and who's really responsible for these problems, is it Ocean Recovery? Is it the clients of 1129? Maybe it makes sense to continue this for six months. That was the first that we had heard about it. I consulted with Mr. McCloskey, and we came back and we said we'd be willing to do that. So the hearing officer then adopted the agreement that city staff and Ocean Recovery had made at the conclusion of that hearing. So again, that is not a final decision. It is not subject to appeal. I think that's the end of the analysis. However, even if you do conclude that it is a final decision, you're faced with a unique standard of review, and the city attorney alluded to this somewhat earlier this evening and in more detail in his staff report, the standard of review is not de novo. That means that you can't substitute your own judgment for what the hearing officer should have done, what you would have done in his place. Instead is, is it abuse of discretion, the decision he made? And that's only if you conclude it is a decision, was that decision an abuse of discretion? And I think the answer to that is clearly no. The reason for that is case laws is fairly clear on this. An abuse of discretion means that there's no evidence supporting that decision. There's no substantial evidence supporting that decision. Again, only if you get to the determination that it was in fact a decision. Here we have public comments, evidence presented that lasted over an hour and a half that evening on February 12th. There was significant evidence before him that led him to conclude that the best course of action was to recommend a continuance. Again, it's our contention that that was not a decision, but if it was a decision, there's certainly ample evidence to support that determination, that it was a decision and that it made sense to continue it. What was that evidence? It was the conflicting testimony and who was responsible for the problems. Was it the clients of Ocean Recovery? Was it the clients of 1129? There was also testimony about some conditions that can be imposed on Ocean Recovery that we agreed to abide by for a temporary six-month period. The hearing officer specifically said, let's see if Ocean Recovery can in fact operate satisfactorily for six months, and we'll come back at that time and take a look at it. So even if you conclude that the continuance was in fact a decision, there was certainly substantial evidence to support that, which means that his decision must be upheld. I have nothing further for you at this time. I'm, of course, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. O'Connor? Okay, thank you. Okay, before I invite the public to come up, I would again ask the city attorney, since we are limited, and what type of testimony we can take tonight to help you, help us do our job better. Maybe he can review what's appropriate to enter into the record this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is a unique standard of appeal. It is a question of abuse of discretion. That's understood in the law to mean essentially whether or not there was any evidence in the record to support the hearing officer's decision and that he acted consistently with the law. They need to, the testimony that's relevant to the council tonight is to whether or not the hearing officer conducted himself consistently with our law and whether or not the, there's any evidence in the record to support the decision, if it was a decision, to continue the matter for six months. And if, and I recognize that there's some overlap and gray area between whether the facility should continue to operate or not, but that's really, any new testimony is not relevant to this issue and determination. It's only the matters that were presented at the time of the hearing.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll open it up to a public comment. Three minutes, and watch the blue box for the yellow light. That means you have one minute left.
Hi, my name's Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach, and I'm up here because of the notice to the public where it says that the city provides a yellow signing card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. This is how it's advertised to the public. This is what people come here at a public hearing and think they're going to get is five minutes. In the past, when city council wanted to change the amount of time given at public hearings, they had to vote on it. So I don't know how you change the time tonight from five minutes to three minutes without notifying the public. That's my problem, is that you need to vote before you do that.
My understanding, it's within the discretion of the chair. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
I would agree, and it is the discretion of the chair for the conducting of the public hearings. It's within the power of the chair to limit, and that's consistent with the Brown Act. I understand your concern is on it.
Well, because it's advertised in such a fashion to the public, and they plan what they're going to say, and they think they're going to have time, and normally, time has only been cut in the past, of course. I know we don't run things like we used to, but in the past, only when there were large amounts of people, they're not, you know, like an abundance of large amounts of people. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. First speaker.
Paul Lopez, 1125 and a half, West Balboa Boulevard. I am one of 115's direct neighbors. I came in front of this council about four years ago when I found out that I had two sober living facilities that moved in on each side of me, 1129 and 115. At that particular time, and there are some new faces on the city council, I might add, but some familiar faces, that basically said that your hands were tied, there was nothing really that we could do about it. Well, I'm here today, Larry's here today, other citizens today, to ask for your help. And the question was asked earlier about whether there was a feeling that the delay somehow was to the detriment of the neighbors. I think it was a councilperson, Gardner. And unequivocally, that's how we feel. We presented on, at the February 12th meeting, 144 signatures, 10 letters written directly, written by neighbors that lived directly adjacent to the facility, citing very specific examples of how this operation was being mismanaged and was to the detriment of the quality of life into the neighborhood down between 11th and 12th Street. We presented pictures of garages that were converted into meeting rooms, of people smoking in the courtyard. The public also provided information, which actually was acknowledged by the operator, of unlawful group gatherings, where on Thursday nights, I don't know if it's graduation day or whatever, where there are 30 or 40 people that would congregate for a barbecue, everybody smoking, walking then into a garage that's been converted to a meeting room, and I'm, that's where I'm left out because I didn't, I couldn't hear anything that was in there, but some type of group session or whatever. The operator at the last meeting on February 15th, and I think Larry pointed out in his discussion, misrepresented several facts that were reinforced by the public, by pictures, and by letters that had been supported in the hearing. And I'll just go over a few of those so you get a little bit of a flavor. Operator said no clients have cars at his facility. Absolutely not true. Several clients have cars, out of state license plates parked out in front of their facility. They discourage smoking. I just shared with you the fact that we would get on Thursdays, 30 to 40 people gathering in the courtyard, smoking. Definition of discourage, I'm not really, I'm not really sure. Garages have been used as meeting rooms, which as I understand the parking standards here is not a legal event, some kind of code violation, never enforced. There's never been a car parked in the six garages of that facility. One is a meeting room, the other is a storage for bikes. These are two guard garages, and the third is used as a living room.
Can you wrap it up?
Yeah, I will wrap it up. Let me just see where I want to wrap it up here. Final item is that the operator stated that he had four of his employees on site and had one full-time manager. It was made very clear, reinforced by the public, that there was no full-site manager or full-time manager on site, as evidenced by testimony from the public. So what I would ask in harmony with Larry is to enforce your law, and where we think that we have been, where we don't think it's fair to the neighbors that have been living this with four years, is to continue. We think that that's in the air of the operator and not the residents. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Colleen Darling, and I own the house at 1113, which is directly next to 1115. We have a pony wall fence, so I've been there, I've seen it all. And I just, I wanted to share a couple of things with you. The comment that they didn't know where it was coming from, 1129 versus 1115, I was there last summer. I know where it's coming from. Countless times, I went to the fence, and I yelled at the guys, and I got to the point I said, I'm going to call the cops unless you shut up. This is 10 or 11 o'clock at night. I have a three-year-old and a five-year-old. They go to bed way before 10 or 11 o'clock at night. It's not acceptable. I hear the screen doors slamming. That goes well into the night. They have a policy of, I think it's eight to 10, 11, for noise. It was 6:00 AM until whenever, at least midnight, and then when the guys went to bed, their windows are wide open and their TVs are blaring. Now, that might be okay for them, but what about us? We can't even open our windows because there's so much noise next door. I own my house. I have a renter in there now who is leaving five months early due to the side stream smoke, that she has three children and cannot open her windows in her house. She's, she came and spoke at the public hearing, and she's actually afraid to be there now. I have no choice but to let her out. We spoke at the last hearing of what's a suitable number, and I think what came down to it was 14 people because that's where they could financially be stable. I just lost half of my money to pay for my mortgage. I mean, that doesn't make me very stable. I have two houses to rent, and now I'm in the situation saying, by the way, I have a halfway or sober living house next door, which I have to disclose to any tenants coming in. It's not an easy rental situation for me. The other point I want to make, I understand they have a right to be in different places, but it's not like having a normal neighbor. If there's six apartments over there, which I lived there when there was six apartments, you had people coming and going. People go to work, people hang out. It's a different flow there. When you have the mass of people, they all get up, they all have their meetings, or they do their breakfast, and it's like seven or eight o'clock, they all flow to go someplace. So it's like, okay, here's 15 men coming out of this place. It's a little uncomfortable to be down there. Then they have their smoke breaks. I know they're working to get it down to like four people. But it's there, every day, in your face. You know, it's not just like a normal type of situation for people to deal with every day. I'd like to see the permit denied. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Dick Nichols, Corona del Mar.
Three minutes tonight, Dick.
Okay. I would like to point out just a couple of things. One is that this is six and over. There's nobody saying it's under. The six and over was what the state allowed in residential. This is no question that this is not allowed in residential. We are not trying to even defend that. We're saying, oh, yeah, we'll figure some way to make it legal. This is crazy. This is not allowed in residential. This is, this is a hospital-type home. It is not zoned for that area. You guys made the zoning R2. You certainly are not the ones that are enforcing it. That's a cinch. We need to enforce the rules. Secondly, the rules say that the six or under, you're allowed one per property. If we interpret this as one per property, that should only have six on it, not 12 that we've allowed sober living by the sea to have, just simply because they've had them a long time, so forth. There should be no more than six on a residential property, and a property is the land that it's on. I think we need to look at this and interpret it properly. This is, we need to enforce our rules. You made the rules. Now you're saying, oh gee, this residential is no longer, it isn't residential. This has always had this home or this apartment building on it, and we, and they have rights to use that forever. Well, in Corona del Mar, when we downzoned places, and you did the same thing there, that wasn't allowed. If the person came in and made any change to the facility, they had to bring it up to code. And basically, that is not being done here at all. And that was when it was just residential coming in. This is, these are totally different. These weren't group homes before that. So basically, these people have come in and put commercial into this, and commercial hospital virtually. They should not be allowed on this property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Denise Oberman, in the interest of the three minutes.
Denise, do you want to pull the microphone down?
Yeah, Denise Oberman, thank you, Ed. Good evening, Council. I wanted to reference this map because I do want to articulate what the conditions are here and make it clear beyond a shadow of a doubt that there's a condition of severe overconcentration in this area. And the hearing officer advised us that he was directed by the council to take into careful attention the need to try to mitigate for overconcentration. Every one of the facilities that Mr. Kiff has identified in this map and pointed out is a large facility, and I'm not just talking about seven or greater, I'm talking about two times that. In addition to that, there is a facility at 1217 West Bay, which the city probably cannot regulate, or which is pending of a license, six and under. And all of these are, I believe Mr. Mathina aired in the distance with 1216, the distance between the 1115 West Balboa, which is the property in question, or the use in question, and 1216 is actually less than 250 feet from there. The council, the hearing officer was presented with pretty compelling information, as the staff said, at the hearing that he may not have had in advance, and he did say at the hearing that it gave him pause about whether it was appropriate to issue a use permit, and in fact, he said, in relatively clear terms, it probably is not appropriate to issue a use permit, but he basically punted by not making a decision. And what I want to point out is, at the end of the day, every one of these facilities, including 1115, is illegal. None of them got the required permits, whether it be CUPs under the prior, pre-04 ordinance, or FEPs, or for that matter, the other types of approvals that would be needed to operate in this area. So all of these facilities are in fact illegal under the city's law. Secondly, I do want to make the point that this facility and these other facilities are within several hundred feet of Newport Elementary School and the adjacent playground. So at the end of the day, we've got a use that is incompatible with other uses that are within the area. I don't know how you're going to rule, I'm not a lawyer, as to whether it was appropriate or not, but if we strip, if the council strips the hearing officer of his capabilities and in fact, his freedom to make a decision independently, then I think we're really at risk of imploding the whole ordinance and what was stated to be the intent of the ordinance. So I ask that, I do believe, I was present at the hearing, I'm wrapping, that the hearing officer's intent was to deny a permit, but he was uncertain as to what the protocol is because of the vagaries in the ordinance, and therefore, he issued a continuance, that that was not what he saw based on the evidence presented. So I ask for denial as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Any other speakers?
Councilmember, my name is Laura Curran. I did attend this hearing and, you know, I have to say, I have only been to this particular hearing. But having been to many of the council discussions on this matter, my understanding was that when we went to a hearing, there was a decision. It was either approve or deny. So I sound calm, but when this decision came down, first I was confused, then I was incredulous, and honestly, I'm kind of mad as hell. Because we've sat through this, we've gone through this process, and at the end of it, we're given a decision which really is no decision. It's as if there were a land use decision where someone was polluting river or diverting water without a permit. And we said, "Well, we'll see if you stop and in six months, we'll come back and see how you're doing." And in the meantime, we still live with the deleterious effects of the use. The other item that really concerned me is that it wasn't clear to me that if there was this continuance in six months, date certain, that we had measures to really determine if they complied with the requirements of the ordinance, for example, smoking reduction. So if there were a continuance, you need clear measurable enforcement of the provisions. And I really have concerns about that, given that the staff report indicated that one of the measures, that one of the measures to prevent smoking was to have people smoking in the courtyard, and as long as it went up through the open air, it would be fine, because it couldn't escape around the walls. So, you know, those were my perceptions and takeaways from the hearing. I know we've all put a lot into this. We'd like to see it resolved appropriately and to manifest our intent to have residential neighborhoods that we can all live in and enjoy and that we can enforce our ordinance. Thank you, members of council.
Thank you. Okay. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, I'll invite the appellant to step forward if he so desires. Pardon me? Three minutes. You have three minutes to make your rebuttals.
Thank you. Briefly, hopefully my voice won't go out on me again. I would just like to observe and number specific points. Despite arguing procedure, the applicant still made factual arguments, still referenced the fact that there was quote-unquote confusion. You do have the complete record. Read it. There was no confusion. So the premise for this extension is invalid on its face. There was no conflicting testimony. There is no inconsistency if you unfortunately went to the effort of wading through that pile, which gets to a different point. I've been to virtually all these hearings. The evidence, the file, the package you have in front of you is by far the most complete for denial compared to any other hearing that anybody's gone through, by far. If this isn't ultimately denied, your law isn't being fairly and impartially applied, period. And because of that, and I'm really kind of disappointed that your city council isn't making this observation, if your conclusion is that this applicant should be denied, then you have the absolute right to come to the conclusion that it's inappropriate and unfair to grant this six-month probationary period. It's simply wrong. Additional point, and understand, this isn't, "Well, we're gonna give you a little more time to figure out parking. Oh, we're gonna see if you can get things together to make us happy about some denser use." This is a very torturous situation with rules you folks applied, that a deal was made. "We're gonna give you more time." That's what your city staff said to the applicant. That's not the job. That wasn't the role. The hearing officer's review was supposed to be independent. If a deal's been done, how can the hearing officer be looking at this objectively and clearly? In fact, that's more why he struggled with that. He wasn't allowed to make a decision because frankly, he didn't want to upset the deal that was agreed to. This is not a normal use permit process. Never was, never could be. Ultimately, my bottom-line point is, you folks procedurally, despite the way this has been pitched to you, if you believe that the evidence, if you chose to wade through it, would end up leading to a denial, absolutely, I think you can decide right now that procedurally it's okay to please do as I've requested. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, does the applicant have any additional comments?
Just briefly, again, Sean O'Connor for Ocean Recovery. We understand that this is an emotional issue for many of the residents. We understand that group homes are not a popular use. But we also know that you folks understand that there are certain protections afforded to group homes. We are doing our best to be a good neighbor. I could take time right now to explain to you how we've been told point-blank by members of city staff that we're viewed as one of the best, if not the best operator. I could tell you how we've made additional improvements to our operating rules so that we can become an even better neighbor. I won't because I don't think that's appropriate. Again, the only issues before the council tonight are, was it a final decision? I think the only thing that we've heard tonight actually support the conclusion that it was not a final decision. I think perhaps, I find myself agreeing with Ms. Oberman tonight, at least as to one thing she said. She said that the hearing officer basically punted and didn't make a decision. Ms. Curran said it was a decision, there really was no decision. And the appellant himself, Mr. Mathias, had just said that the hearing officer was not allowed to make a decision. I think that's pretty compelling toward the conclusion that we urge the council make, and that it was not a decision. Again, if you determine that it was a decision, certainly substantial evidence supports the hearing officer's determination to continue the hearing for six months.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Councilman Hen.
I think I'd like to bring some focus to the discussion. I very much appreciate the concerns and the passion of our citizens who are wanting to argue whether or not a use permit should be granted here tonight. But our city attorney did make it very clear to us that is not the question that's before us. The question that is before us is, was there a decision? And if so, was there abuse of discretion? And what should we do about it? Those are the questions that we need to answer. This is definitely not an ordinary situation. Under the ordinary use permit situation, an applicant comes because he wants to establish a use and presents an application and a decision is made. And in that circumstance, a continuance is really of no concern to anyone but the applicant because there is no use in effect. In this situation, it's quite different. This operator's been here for four years. He's been operating for a full year of that time, 13 months actually, since the time that he was supposed to have made application to be able to continue his use. And there was a lot of time to do that, but yet we still wound up at the very end, toward the end of February, with the actual use permit hearing. The difference here is, this is a use that is in use right now. It is an existing use. It is very clear to me that there was a decision here made tonight. It was a decision to grant and to continue, on a temporary basis, a use. It was the grant of a temporary use permit. Very different from a simple continuance of a use permit application where there is no use established in the first place. So from my perspective, I conclude that there was clearly a decision. It was a decision to grant a temporary use permit. We can argue about the definition of the word continuance and the definition of the word decision. Clearly, the substance of this is a decision was made, at least to me. That brings me to the issue of the abuse of discretion. The city attorney in his analysis here said, "Now, if you do find that there was a decision made, then you have to decide, did the hearing officer abuse his discretion in making the decision?" And further, that there wasn't any evidence in support of his decision that would cause it to be an abuse. I do see two abuses of discretion in this situation. In the first place, a hearing was held. The hearing and public testimony was in effect closed. And it was at that point, after the point at which anyone had the opportunity to comment on the decision that was being proposed, a decision was made. A decision was made to grant a temporary use permit. There was no opportunity for the public to comment. There is no evidence in the record to support that the public had the opportunity to comment, or anyone else for that fact. And this is not just an inconsequential thing. Because the grant of this temporary use permit conferred rights to continue to operate, and furthermore, rights that were actually not defined for the public or anyone to comment on. There was some vague, I was there, there was some vague discussion of the fact that there would be some conditions upon the operator's use included in this agreement, and that those conditions might be decided in a few weeks and finalized so that the operator could continue his use for another six months. The granting of this temporary use permit is really sort of the golf equivalent of granting a mulligan. And that is not what the intent of our ordinance was, in my view. And particularly, it was an abuse of discretion to close the public hearing, then make a decision, and a decision that had significant consequence associated to it, significant weight. There was another basis which I conclude that this was an abuse of discretion. There is nothing in our ordinance, and apparently in our codes, that allows a hearing officer or anyone else apparently to grant a temporary use permit in this circumstance. And I therefore find no basis under the ordinance that authorizes this as a lawful decision. And on that basis, it's very clear that the record does not contain any discussion or any evidence to that effect. I was there. And so with no substantive evidence in support of the fact that this was a lawful decision, and no evidence in a reading of the ordinance which would support that conclusion, I conclude that it was an abuse of discretion on his part. Therefore, I believe that this is a decision that was made. It was an abuse of discretion. I believe that we should remand this issue back to the hearing officer for a prompt decision. In fact, I'd like to characterize, for purposes of characterizing our discussion going forward here, I'd like to make a motion that the council find that there was a decision made. And secondly, that the council would remand this issue back to the hearing officer for a decision to be made on the merits of the application in prompt fashion. And furthermore, I would ask in deference to the appellant's request, although it said in our staff report from the city attorney that the hearing officer probably should do this anyway, I don't think we should mind calling it to his attention. As to whether or not the hearing officer does need to make a decision as to whether or not there was any false or misleading information that had been presented at the use permit hearing. And secondly, if the hearing officer does find that a use permit should be granted, that this issue of having a restriction on second-hand smoke that is in accordance with the words of our ordinance be also carefully considered by the hearing officer for inclusion in whatever he might approve. And so that's my motion. I'm sorry to take that much time.
I wonder if you would want to add that if the hearing officer does decide to issue a use permit, that there would be what was initially proposed, which is a six-month review of the conditions of the use permit.
You know, I...
I mean, that at least...
I would just assume that the hearing officer would make a decision.
Well, he is making it...
You know, he can decide what he wants, but...
I'm just saying that if he makes a decision and says, "No," well, that's the end of it. But if he says, "Yes, here are the conditions," wouldn't it be good to have that ability to examine in six months and make sure those conditions are being upheld? Or are we going to assume that code enforcement will do it?
Code enforcement has the ability to enforce the use permit at any time it so wishes. I think probably, Mr. City Attorney, you should, David, you should let us know, but I assume the hearing officer has the discretion to include a review at some earlier period if he wishes. I just don't particularly wish to direct him in that respect from this forum tonight.
I understand. It's apparently, it's one of our standard conditions to have review, apparently, within six months in a use situation. We can do that. However, I share Councilmember Hen's concern about directing the hearing officer, or you can certainly ask him to review and consider that provision. I just, we need to leave the hearing officer independent for the exercise of discretion to weigh the evidence and apply the law. I think the way it was articulated by Councilmember Hen with respect to the other two issues and asking him to look at those issues is appropriate. I think that ultimately, the hearing officer needs to make a decision based upon the evidence that's presented, however. Can I answer your question, Councilmember?
Well, yes, in sense of, okay, we're not gonna tell the hearing officer, here's what you do. But I still think that would be something that we would want to at least bring up for his consideration, some kind of review period. If we have a norm, I mean, I don't know that we, do we have, Sharon, in most of ours?
I'm not entirely sure if we're using our standard conditions of approval for all use permits in these cases. But typically, for any use that requires a use permit, a standard condition is that the planning commission, who's usually the body granting these, has the right to bring it back for review at any time that they or the planning director feels is appropriate if there are any concerns that the conditions of approval are not doing the job they were intended to do. I suppose in some cases, we do put a time limit on it, but typically, it's left open-ended.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Councilman Rosansky.
Well, I'll second Councilman Hen's motion, and I too think that there was a decision made at the hearing and that it was not just a continuance of the hearing. Clearly, they were given a continued right to operate. It wasn't just a matter of an evidentiary thing where, you know, we didn't have the right person there to testify at that meeting, at that hearing, and that we're gonna wait a couple of weeks and reconvene to get that evidence that we needed. I mean, six months is a significant time period in which to extend a hearing, I don't know, it's probably unprecedented, I would think. And so I will support his motion. And I would like a resolution, a quick resolution, up or down, so that we can, you know, move on to the business at hand. So that would be my second.
Councilman Curry?
Mr. Mayor, may I just ask a question real quick? Could I make the suggestion that in the motion since now it's been moved and seconded, that you include the phrase, when Councilmember Hen, you said, "Make a motion," that a decision was made, add the phrase "without substantial evidence," just so it's clear that you're making a finding that was not substantial evidence to support the decision? Is that consistent with your motion?
I didn't think that that standard was applicable to the decision as to whether or not it was a decision.
Right. No, it's not in and of itself. So you're making a motion to conclude that a decision was made and that decision was without substantial evidence.
Correct.
That's what I wanted to make sure we had in the actual motion.
Yes.
Is that acceptable to you?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rosansky? Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Curry?
The action of the hearing officer has been characterized as a probationary period. Were there conditions that the operator needs to meet during the course of this six months that would vest him with any kind of right or approval? Is he indeed on probation, that if he meets these standards, therefore, he will be approved? Or is that not what happened? Was it simply a matter of the item was continued?
Mr. Curry, to answer your question, no. There wasn't a requirement that if all of those conditions were met, that they would automatically get approval. It was a discussion that occurred, as Mr. Hen noted, at the end of the hearing. And if I could just take a brief sidebar... And if I could just take a brief sidebar, Mr. O'Connor characterized it as a deal. And just so folks in the audience know, this was something we discussed at the hearing in the public setting. There wasn't any discussion beforehand about this. We were trying to conclude the hearing, trying to respond to the hearing officer's wishes. But the, the conditions that were discussed were for this six-month period to, that the operator proposed, and that I agreed, would allow them to be a better neighbor during that period. But it was not contingent upon approval.
But there's no quid pro quo in terms of if you are, therefore you will be approved.
That's correct.
So that's, that decision was not made by the hearing officer.
That decision was not made.
The, the six-month period has been characterized as a temporary use permit. Do we, is there anything such as that in law? Is that an actual noun?
It's, well, it's not a noun, but a phrase, you mean, that this...
It is, it's a phrase with legal meaning.
Yeah, it has legal meaning, and we do not have provisions that grant it, that authorize the grant of a...
Is it accurate to characterize the six-month continuance as a temporary use permit?
If you so decide. I'm sorry, I, you know, there's arguments on both sides, and yes, it can be characterized as that, that's not what was said. But it could also be characterized as a continuance, and that's what you have to interpret your ordinance to determine. Because if it's, if you determine it was a temporary use permit, and I see arguments on both sides, I'm not going to...
And if we characterize it as a temporary use as a decision, in this case, it was six months, but wouldn't any, therefore, if you follow that logic, and you accept that reasoning, wouldn't any continuance, you know, 60 days, six days?
And that's an excellent question.
Contribute the same thing?
Councilmember, and it, and it's an excellent question. It's the slippery slope issue. What is and what is not, therefore, a temporary use permit under these interesting circumstances? I think if you make the determination that's a continuance such as this, in effect grants a temporary use permit, de facto, or probationary use permit, de facto, however you, it's characterized, you then have to face the issue, what does not? And I, one could, one could articulate the distinction between those matters that are genuine continuances, those that were necessary for the fair hearing of the issues. If you determine that a six-month, six-month continuance of this matter wasn't necessary for the fair hearing and resolution of these issues, then it's probably a temporary use permit. If it was necessary for the fair hearing and resolution of these issues, then it is potentially a continuance. And it would be akin to, okay, we'll give you six months to work out your parking issue, that kind of a situation. So that's the scenario you're faced with interpreting.
And the, the abuse of decision, of discretion was asserted because the hearing was held, testimony was given, the hearing was closed, and then rather than saying approved or disapproved, it was continued. I guess the question is, he would not have needed to open the hearing again had he approved or disapproved? Would he, is he required to have opened the hearing again and taken more testimony by virtue of the fact that he granted a continuance?
I'm not sure I followed exactly, but I think, I think I understand what you're going at. If, if the hearing officer had made a determination based upon the presentation and the issue before him, in other words, should a use permit be granted or shouldn't it be, then there's no change of any relief, no change in any issue, and everyone testified to it and had a fair shot at the issue. The next question comes is, but the relief changed. If you interpret the action taken as not simply being a continuance of a hearing to provide for fairness in the process, but in fact, the grant of a temporary use permit, and then no one else had the opportunity to testify on that, it's a change of relief that's being sought, then yes, I think it's possible that you could conclude there was an abuse of discretion and a failure to follow our procedures and policies.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daigle?
Okay, so if you look in our code and under temporary use permit, you wouldn't find it. We don't issue those.
Correct.
Okay. What is the maximum time period for continuances, 180 days?
Actually, there's no really maximum time period for a continuance. We have two different parameters that we're faced with in a situation like this from our code. One is a hearing officer is required to render a decision within 35 days of the close of the hearing. But by calling it a continuance by definitions, it's not closed, the hearing's not over, but the public testimony was closed, so we have an ambiguity there. The next issue is, is we do have permit streamlining act issues that ultimately are dealt with. If it's not dealt with, and if a use is not granted, then they have an argument, or there is an argument, that you can only continue it 90 days upon stipulation and agreement of the parties. Well, the parties agreed to six months. Does that in and of itself make it a temporary use permit? Would I have to argue that to prevent a grant of the, the permit streamlining act? So, I think we've got a parameters we can deal with, the 35 and the 90, and the general concept is, is that, I think that you're faced with, is if an action is necessary for the fair resolution of the issues and providing the parties due process, then it's a continuance. If, if it's not, and it's effectively giving them something that is a temporary use, and what we call in the law preliminary relief or pending relief, then yeah, you've got a potential issue where relief has been granted, that is a decision.
Okay. Well, since he wasn't applying for a temporary use permit, then it would seem like what he was saying is the use can temporarily continue. But that wasn't what was before the hearing officer, what was before the hearing officer, wasn't that a use permit? To say, "Look, look at this as a full-blown use permit." Wasn't that what he's supposed to evaluate?
Well, the application was for a use permit.
Okay.
Either to be granted, that's what the application was, and not a temporary use permit.
Okay.
I'm not suggesting a hearing officer doesn't have discretion to manage a situation, and we certainly don't have a temporary use permit concept. But the, the issue that Councilmember Hen's pointed out is, is that there was a change of relief, what we would call relief. And the first application was for a use permit, and then that changed. And then the public wasn't given the opportunity to address that particular change of relief. And so I can see how the council could determine that was an abuse of discretion if it felt this decision had been made.
A concern that I have is by the hearing officer's own admission. He said, "I'm not persuaded it's a good idea to issue a use permit at this time. So why not sort of thumbs up or thumbs down at that time, instead of saying, 'Well, you know, maybe in six months, I can give you a use permit, but I sure can't give you one today.'"
You're concerned about the hearing officer's determination at that point.
Right.
And ultimately, you know, you're looking at what he chose to do and whether it was supported by the evidence in that situation. And so that's the question that's before you.
Okay. Well, I support the motion.
Did the hearing officer ever state what he expected to be accomplished during the six-month period of time that would lead him to make a permanent decision? I mean, is there some actions, or series of actions, that were going to take place that would be a standard that he was going to apply?
Mr. Mayor, as I noted, I can't interpret the hearing officer's thoughts directly, but my interpretation from what he said, if he didn't say it directly, was that he, like staff, were, was getting a significant amount of conflicting material from testimony from the residents, which was, as Ms. Walcott said, very compelling. Equally compelling testimony from the applicant saying, "That wasn't us." And he saw the abatement period for the other homes that's nearby as an opportunity to see what would happen after that home closed. So I don't know if he would have said it in as many words as I did, but that's, to me, that's clearly what he was thinking and where he was headed with that.
Okay. Well, I think I support the motion also. Is there any further discussion? Please vote.
With Councilmember Curry voting no, the motion carries.
We'll now go back to our normal sequence of events in the agenda, which takes us back to oral reports from City Council on committee activities. Councilwoman Daigle?
Yes. For the past couple of years, I've been representing the city at the Southern California Association of Governments, actually now represent Costa Mesa, Fountain Valley, and Newport Beach. And I've been re-elected to that post. And the regional planning kind of continues to grow, and, and it really affects our city, not all us, in a positive way. So it's important that we have a seat at the table, you know, when they're doling out regional housing applications and things like that. So it's some pretty heavy-duty public policy, but I think it's good that we have representation. I appreciate the support of the council to have me continue in that post as well. And then also, I want to clarify on our Citizens Aviation Committee that there was an item that was pulled on an air quality study. And I wanted the community to know that that is, that study is going to come back to the committee and ultimately to the council. And the reason that it was pulled is because we wanted to make sure that the study is going to be defensible. And so we're getting expert review from AQMD and from a professor at USC. And this is because environmental impacts have, are a cornerstone to our advocacy to control growth at John Wayne Airport. So we want to make sure when we go down that path that we're doing so in a way that's very careful and thorough. So those would be my reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gardner?
Nothing.
Councilwoman Webb? Councilman Hen?
I have a few reports.
Surprise.
We had a Economic Development Committee meeting this past week, where the Vice President of Targeted Community News, that's his title, at the LA Times, made a presentation on his view of the future of the Daily Pilot, and also made, was also participating in that was Brady Rhodes, who is the editor of the Daily Pilot. And it was clear that he indicated that the Times is committed to continuing the Daily Pilot and other similar regional publications, of which there are probably another half a dozen, that the LA Times owns and operates. Although there was been a substantial cutback in the Daily Pilot, he thinks they're fundamentally done with that issue for now, and that they will be retaining a city news desk here in Newport Beach, and editorial control here locally, not out of LA. And that the cutbacks that were made were fundamentally back office cutbacks. And so in addition to that, and the question and answer, he did field a number of questions about the apparent reduction of coverage of the Daily Pilot. And I think we all need to be careful to not confuse a reduction in the thickness of the Daily Pilot with the quality and depth of their coverage. But it was suggested to him that one thing that we do miss is the multi-layered relationship we had with the pilot, particularly when Tom Johnson was the editor, who was very involved in community affairs, and it was a sort of a nuanced relationship in that respect. And I think they took to heart the idea that they need to try and re-establish that. Brady Rhodes, as the editor, really needs to make a concerted effort. And that they need to encourage more and deeper reporting from their reporters, and more and deeper participation by citizens and governmental participants in the Daily Pilot, similar to the article that was printed that Homer Bloudow wrote just the other day. So all in all, it was a good, it was a good discussion, and we were all glad to have it. It did, I think, open up communications better. And since that time, Scott has called me, and I'd like to get the sense of counsel on this. He has indicated that he would be happy to make that same presentation and question and answer here at a council session, if we would like. I suggested to him that he may want to do that, or it may also be appropriate to make a, to use a Speak Up Newport session, or he could directly participate with residents of the city in that respect. If the sense of counsel is that we should invite him to come to a council meeting, I'd be glad to do that. I'll call him back tomorrow.
That sounds a good idea. I can say, though, that, that your impact was immediate, because when I was at the Gem in for Julian event on Saturday, the Daily Pilot was a sponsor and wasn't present. Of course, Tom Johnson was the emcee, but anyway.
Well, his presentation was interesting in the respect that he had one existing competitor, the Orange County Register, with one of their reporters in the audience, and Tom Johnson himself was in the audience, who intends to be a competitor of the Daily Pilot. So it was kind of interesting. But they were nevertheless pretty open with what they were doing.
I'd actually rather see them at Speak Up Newport than at a council meeting.
Yeah, I would say Speak Up Newport would be the correct forum for that.
Is that pretty much the sense of counsel here? All right. Well, I'll be glad to communicate that to him. Then with regard to the ad hoc committee on group homes, we did have a session considering the Yellowstone use permit and reasonable accommodation applications. And as it turned out, based upon staff recommendation and as ratified by the hearing officer, all four locations for Yellowstone were denied as to their use permit applications, and also denied as to their reasonable accommodation applications, subject to the preparation of an appropriate resolution to be reviewed and signed by the hearing officer at an upcoming meeting. We also had, as was earlier commented, a discussion on Pacific Shores reasonable accommodation. This was for four client beds at 900 West Balboa, and that application for reasonable accommodation was approved by the hearing officer.
Sorry, Mr. Hen, that, you said Pacific Shores.
I'm sorry. I meant Balboa.
It really doesn't have a name. It's Element Properties.
Yeah, it's nine, it's nine hundred West Balboa. That reasonable application was approved, subject to signing, signature by the hearing officer. And then the Newport Coast Appeal will be heard at the next council meeting, and the Balboa Horizons reasonable accommodation meeting, hearing no.
You mean, Pacific Shores is tomorrow?
Pacific Shores. You can't tell the players without a scorecard here. Pacific Shores reasonable accommodation hearing is scheduled for...
Tomorrow at 2:00 in these chambers.
Here in the council chambers. That's right. And with that, oh, the EQUAC committee did decide not to mature, for council's consideration, a recommendation having to do with leaf blowers that was tabled indefinitely by EQUAC. And that's it?
May I, please excuse me, just to clarify, you said the ad hoc committee, you meant that the hearing officer heard these matters, not the ad hoc committee, right?
I was wondering why I was invited.
Yeah, so the ad hoc committee on group homes wasn't meeting on this. These were, you were announcing what the hearing officer...
That's correct. These are hearing officer decisions.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kiff, for helping me through this too.
Councilman Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Your report, Jim Curry?
The Finance Committee heard a report from staff on our water rates and potential adjustments. The Finance Committee sent back that report to staff with some specific questions, but I think the council should expect that that will be coming up shortly. In addition to that, we took the first look at the facilities finance plan since the Oasis bids have come in, and we will be discussing that in conjunction with our budget considerations as that comes up, so that the council can make some determinations regarding the sequencing of capital projects.
Okay. Thank you. And I have no reports this evening. So we'll move on to our first scheduled public hearing, which is the proposed underground utilities district number 19, San Ana Heights, Mesa Drive, Cypress Street, and a portion of Orchard Drive, and this was continued from March 10th.
If the council would recall, two weeks ago, this matter was before it, to deal with the undergrounding issues as well as adoption of appropriate resolutions and such. And what we ran into a snag with respect to the contract with, or the MOU with the county. You gave instructions to staff to go back to the county and discuss working out some of the issues related to the cap of the actual cost of, for the construction and the undergrounding, and to deal with the payment issues, as well as deal with an issue with respect to the ITCC, which is a tax that could potentially be charged, or at least arguably could be charged under the circumstances. The Office of the City Attorney addressed those issues along with the assistance of public work staff. We prepared the revisions to the MOU, forwarded them to the county, county did real yeoman's labor in reviewing them, county councils reviewed them, and we're bringing to you a final proposed MOU that addressed the concerns of the council as they were discussed last meeting. We gave you a memorandum from my office of this afternoon identifying the specific changes from the last staff report. And along with a redlined version of the revised MOU, I would point out a couple of things, if I may. One, in paragraph four, which was the key paragraph that caused some issues, it specifically sets forth deadlines regarding payment, also that we won't be forwarding sums without payment, that we have not in excess of $25,000 in invoices. So I believe that we've addressed the issues the council was concerned about. There's also that paragraph five has been added, the deals with the ITCC tax, and identifies 1.25 million that would be put into city or held in trust essentially by the city for potential liability for that tax for seven years. And that was addressed. At the close of that seven years, those funds would then be returned to the county, assuming there was no tax actually imposed or audited. And those, those funds could be kept in our general fund so long as they're separately accounted and kept discreet, so that they're maintained for return should there not be a tax applied. There were some other small changes, 60 days instead of 40 days and such, but I believe that's the core of the changes, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Okay. Any questions? Councilman Rosansky?
Oh, well, never mind. I was going to make a motion, but I think Councilwoman Daigle wants to do it.
Okay.
Oh, fine, then I'll make the motion that we accept the staff recommendation.
I'll second that and state that there were some legitimate... I'll second that and state that there were some legitimate concerns raised, and so I think now we have a better agreement, and I thank the county and the city attorney for looking at that and expedited timeframe in the midst of a pretty heavy-duty workload. So, thanks a lot. Appreciate that. And, you know, usually things in my district go like clockwork, and for that, I thank my constituents. So, but that's okay. This is better, and I appreciate everyone's input.
Will you thank your colleagues?
I thank my colleagues, especially you.
Does anyone in the public feel compelled to testify on this? Seeing no one, I'll close public testimony, bring it back for a vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mario, for sitting here all night.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I did want to thank the city staff, specifically Homer and the city clerk, who got the final version out to me over the weekend. I'm very impressed that your city clerk would send me something on a Sunday. I thought that I was the only person who worked on Sunday. So, I was very impressed and I really appreciate it, and the work of the city attorney. And not only Mr. Hunt, but his assistant city attorney, Ms. Beecham, I assume is her pronunciation, really worked with us throughout the day. I teach on Fridays, and so it was back and forth between the teaching assignments and working with your staff and with county staff. And so, we very much appreciate it. And I'm sure the citizens of Santa Ana Heights do, and I know the supervisor does as well. So, thank you all very much for your kindness and for moving this forward.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to item number 10, appearing of hearing officers, denial of use permit 2008-033, 1216 West Balboa Boulevard, Newport Coast Recovery. And the recommended action is to continue this to April 14th, 2009.
Do we have the recommended action?
A second.
Okay. Does anyone want to testify on this? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back for a vote.
Motion carries.
Okay. Before we do public comments, the city clerk chided me to remind everyone, I guess I should have done this under oral reports, that April 14th is the date that the City Hall and the Park Concept Plan comes before the city council and the public for approval, so that will be on our April 14th agenda. Madam Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay. Sir, how's your opportunity?
My name is John Doughton. I am a permanent, full-time resident of Marina Park. Good evening, landlords.
Good evening, tenant.
Thank you. I have no quarrel with the city. As first a homeowner and now a tenant, I feel I've been treated fairly and equitably, and I want you to know that. I attended yesterday's meeting of the Marina Park Committee chaired by Councilman Hen. The draft ERR was reviewed. I chose not to speak at the meeting because my concern is principally a selfish one and an economic one. From the executive summary, I learned that the project's schedule optimistically extends to 2013-14. Councilman Hen said it will be many years before we see the completion of the park. He also remarked on the difficulty of putting a cost on the project, citing not only current economic climate, but the city's ambitious plans for a new city hall, a new police facility, and so forth. No prioritizing was suggested. Now to my point. Currently, the city enjoys almost $700,000 a year annually in rental income for Marina Park. Because of the lengthy timelines involved in getting the necessary permits and approvals, your own estimate appears to be more than a year. Let your Marina Park tenants continue to occupy and enjoy our units. Let us do so until your project has dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's. I believe the city requires permits from any homeowner who wants to add a second story, cover a patio, or do some other kind of building project. And I think that should be the policy concerning Marina Park. Until the permits are granted by the requisite agencies, I don't think you should begin, quote, "demolition of the coaches," "removal of the trailers." You know, I am one of 30 households among the 52 at the park that live there year-round. We're not trailers or coaches. We are people, and I think it's important to remember that. As I say, I have no quarrel with the city. I've been treated fairly. However, I think it is in your interests and certainly my own to be able to enjoy the use of the park until you are ready to, as the saying goes, until the project is shovel-ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
If you have any questions, I can elaborate. Incidentally, my household is not a group home, and, other than having a teenager with me for three years, I regret that more aren't in the audience to hear this concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry you have to hear it again. My name is Herbert Williams. I'm a full-time resident at Marina Park in Newport Beach. I'm 85 years old, and along with my wife of 64 years, we have lived in this fine park for over 50 years. We are the longest-living residents in the location. I wish to state that my wife and I support the closing of the park and making it into a marina and public park. I also wish to support the existing signed lease agreement that was negotiated approximately two and a half years ago, with the closing date of September of 2009. Upon learning from the city's sources that we will not be able to act upon this closing target date, I am asking for an extension from the September 1st, 2009 close to the year-end of 2010, when your own projections have determined that you may be ready to begin in the first quarter of 2011. This lease extension will do many things for many people. We are known and realize our intentions, our interests, in residing in the park for as long as possible. We all pay an additional lease consideration of over $1 million for our occupancy of that little over a year's occupancy. You will save many hundreds of thousands of dollars by not installing a temporary park with this added maintenance. You will continue to proceed with your own permits, your own bidding, your own regulatory concerns, with your coastal commission and other plans that you feel will not be complete until the first quarter of 2010. According to your own projections, you will not be ready until then. We will continue to occupy our homes, thus eliminating the need for an interim cost of a temporary expense while collecting an additional lease funds for the city. You now know what I have in mind. I want to stay there as long as I can. And I have reasons to believe, most respectfully, that you can give us the response very soon that we can all proceed in a peaceful way. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Dolores Harding. I live in Newport Beach, and I'm here tonight because, just to, well, I guess I wouldn't be here if I didn't have it happen in my family recently. April 4th is Testicular Cancer Awareness Day in the United States. A minimum of 11,000 young men every year get testicular cancer. Thirty percent of them are misdiagnosed. And because we have such a large part in the run, like in the Walk for the Cure, I'm here tonight because I don't want another family to go through what my family had to recently go through, or what my nephew went through for the past year and a half of his life. You all have friends, you have children, you have grandchildren. If your young son or nephew or whatever is age 17, 18, 19, 22, 25, and has a backache, you go to the urologist. If he has a groin pain, you go to the urologist. You don't go to a doctor that then sends you to a chiropractor because you have a sciatica problem. You don't go to someone else because it's a groin pull. You don't get a dose of levuquin because it's prosthesis, and you don't get 30 days of Cipro because it's epididymitis. You make sure early detection will save somebody's life and save somebody from rounds of chemos that impact the ability to have a normal life. What happens is that you can simply get an ultrasound, and that's the easiest way to know. What will happen if you don't get an ultrasound and you don't beg for an ultrasound is you're left with testicular cancer that then can get into the lymph nodes and become vascular and become, you know, and become what's called systemic, which then you need to go through rounds of chemo. Lance Armstrong is a survivor, and he went through hell and back. One of the things that Lance Armstrong did not take was bleomycin. Bleomycin is one of the chemos that will impair your lung function, and he knew that he would never ride a bicycle again if he did that. Scott Hamilton took the, you know, like the bleomycin and realizes that he does have a lung impairment. Other rounds of chemo that you have to take cause neuropathy, and some young kids still want to play the guitar when they grow up. So, I'm here tonight because I was watching on the public television, and we have a fireman that had a groin ache, and he went to the urologist right away, and he got his testicle removed, and he was, you know, very lucky, and it didn't spread into any other part of his body. My nephew went through a year and a half of going from doctor to doctor, and one of the things that happened to him, which is ironic too, and one would never want to have to think this, but when they went to pick up the original ultrasound of a year ago, the radiologist came out and said, you know, "I can understand you might want compensation because our equipment doesn't work well." So, no, I know. I agree, Leslie. And so, that's one of the things that you even want to make sure, that no matter where you go, that you make sure that the equipment works, because it takes years off of your life. Thank you for your time.
Any other public comments? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, the Planning Commission Agenda for March 19th.
Mayor, members of city council, this past Thursday, the Planning Commission approved three use permits. One of those was for the Village Inn at 127 Marine Avenue. That will allow the proprietors there to convert part of the dining room into additional bar seating. The great concession, as far as the neighbors were concerned, was this permit now includes closing hours at midnight instead of 2:00 a.m., which they were able to do under their current operating conditions. The second one was an approval of use permit for the Balboa Inn at 105 Main Street. That allowed them to rearrange some of their function areas inside for dining and private entertainment, private parties, and also allow them to operate now in July and August for private events. That was also approved. Lastly, massage table used at 120 Tustin Road, which includes an existing hair, or, excuse me, facial salon and tailor shop. Council or Planning Commission also did receive the annual update on implementation of the general plan.
Councilwoman Gardner?
That was odd with the tailor. But to go to the Balboa Inn, are there parking issues as far, I know we've had them with the theater as far as summer and what you can do in the summer. Is that going to have to, is that going to raise a red flag with the coastal commission, perhaps, or just us?
They do have waivers there. We didn't determine that this was intensification of use, because what they did as part of the reassignment of use areas, they reduced the net public area for dining, so they brought down the number of required parking spaces to compensate accordingly.
Thank you, David. Okay, that was received and filed. Next is Continued Business, item number 12, Budget Priority Update.
Didn't stand who deserves a medal for sticking around for this one. So, we'll give you as much detail as you want. I think the staff report is pretty adequate.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Again, I'll be brief and really try to answer any questions you may have. At your January 10th goal-setting session, you came up with one of the priorities for this fiscal year, and I'll read it to you. It says, "Focus on the development and adoption of a 2009-10 budget, which is balanced and which allocates the city's resources where they are most needed without adversely affecting services to the public." As I noted in the staff report, this goal would normally be part of the city council's routine business in the normal year, but of course, we know that this is not a normal year. We've begun our budget process for the new fiscal year. We actually began it back in January with budget instructions to the departments. Just this past week, we met, the city manager and I met with each of the department directors and went over their requests for the new fiscal year, and those will be coming before you in early May. What I'd like to do this evening is what I did at the goal-setting session and once before, is to go over the current fiscal year, how we see the budget for the remainder of this fiscal year, and what it means for next fiscal year. And as I did before, what I would like to do is focus on, or at least spend most of my time tonight focusing on the three largest revenue sources for the city. Of course, that's property taxes, sales tax, and transient occupancy tax, which makes up approximately 70% of the general fund budget. I don't have a lot of new information to report than I did before, but I would like to note that we've now received five secured property tax apportionments for the fiscal year. We received eight. At the time I wrote the staff report, we'd only had four. We got another one last Friday. But it's the four that are really telling for me to kind of predict how we're going to go for the fiscal year, because when we look back over about the last five fiscal years, by the time we receive our fourth apportionment, secured tax apportionment for the year, consistently, we receive between 55% and 56% of our secured property taxes for the year. We had received $30,986,000 through the first four apportionments. We interpret late that to be a range between 55 million and 55.3 million and $56.3 million. And what we're estimating for the current fiscal year is actually $55.8 million, which is 55.53% of what we expect to receive for this fiscal year. We're also very interested in how delinquencies and assessment appeals are doing for the county. We're in contact with the county constantly. I'm pleased to report that we are not seeing a significant increase in delinquencies or assessment appeals for the city of Newport Beach as opposed to some other cities. We did receive another tax apportionment, the fifth one, last Friday. It was approximately $3 million, but it does not change our projections. In addition to secured property taxes, if, on page two of the report, you can note that we receive a lot of other types of property taxes, including property tax in lieu of sales tax, property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees, and those are both part of the state triple flip, unsecured property taxes, redemptions, penalties and interest, supplemental property tax, homeowner's exemption, and property transfer tax. I would like to just say, I don't want to go into too much detail, but way back in 1983, as response to Prop 13, prior to 1983, the lien date- 1983, as response to Prop 13, prior to 1983, the lien date for property, secured property taxes was January 1st. So if you bought a home after January 1st, or if you remodeled your home after January 1st, you could escape the reassessment till the following January 1st, whereas, but that tax would become effective July 1st. So you could virtually escape assessments for 16 months. 1983, the state assembly passed SB 813, which called for what I call a rolling lien date, so that if you purchase a home, or if you remodel your home, it's reassessed immediately, and you'll get a supplemental tax bill until the next regular lien date. Because of all the home sales in Newport Beach and all the remodeling that's occurred in the last five years, we are typically receiving about $2.5 million a year in supplemental property taxes due to this rolling lien date. We're seeing a large decrease in that. In fact, I budgeted for this current year, $2.5 million, and we've revised that estimate downwards to $1.3 million, and we're expecting a like amount in the new year. So significant decrease in supplemental property taxes. As it notes in the report, our combined budget estimate, when we put the budget together over a year ago, was $77,92,919. We have revised that total estimate to $77,330,470, so just slightly above our original estimate for all property taxes combined. We also looked at sales tax. I reported to you back in January that we'd only, at that time, I think, received four sales tax payments for the year because we accrued the first two. And we've now received five, and we've got notification of what we're going to receive at the end of March, and which is a cleanup payment. And I know that there was a question at this afternoon about there, there may be a question about that. But we're comfortable with the estimate that we provided you several months ago, and we think our sales tax for the current year will be down about $3.5 million. We haven't changed that amount significantly, which is roughly almost 13% below what we originally estimated. And again, I'll answer any questions you may have on that. The third tax we looked at was transient occupancy tax. We'd budgeted one point, almost $1.3 million for summer vacation rentals, and $11.6 million for hotels, for a total of $12.9, almost $13 million. We have seen a slowdown in our hotel revenues in January and February. Not a large slowdown, but we are seeing a slowdown. But with the information we have to date, we have not changed our budget estimate. We believe we'll achieve $12.9 million in transient occupancy tax. There are many, many--
The slowdown, was it in terms of just gross amount? Or, okay, so we're still getting the dollars the same, even though the room numbers may be down and--
Yes, the occupancy is down for our hotels.
And the room rates, a lot of times, are down.
A lot of times, the room rates are down, but we're not seeing enough of a decrease at the present time to reduce our estimate for the current fiscal year. I noted in the report that, however, hotel tax collections for the remainder of the fiscal year are critical, and we will monitor these collections closely. We may have to revise this assessment downward on future reports, but at the present time, we're not revising it downward. Many other revenue sources, just in the general fund alone, there's over 450 revenue sources. These, some of the larger ones include business license tax, building permits, plan check fees, recreation fees, parking revenues, interest earnings, use of money and property, and other revenues. And finally, if you look at page five of the report, all those other revenue sources added together, our original budget estimate was $40.6 million. We've revised that downward slightly to $40.5 million, or a decrease of $126,000, which is really pretty good considering the size of the general fund budget, it's over $150 million.
Within the sales tax, you have autos, restaurant, retail. Are there any categories within the sales tax that are particularly down?
New car sales are down. Restaurants are actually, at least the last time I checked, restaurants were actually doing relatively well. They're down, but I think we're seeing a slight comeback in the restaurants. But our auto sales are significantly down. That's partially offset by, we're seeing an increase in lease revenue. When somebody can't afford to buy a car, they might lease one. Trouble with that is, if you buy a car, you get the sales tax immediately. If you lease a car, it's monthly payments, and you get that money over extended period of time. So, to summarize, we're still projecting a general fund shortfall of approximately $3.3 million, which equates roughly to the decrease in sales tax, we're seeing a $3.5 million. The way we've addressed that, as you know, is there's a soft hiring freeze on. If you want to fill a position, we have to have the city manager's approval before we can do a recruitment. We've asked all departments in the city to make a 2% budget reduction, which is really 1% for half the year, because we didn't ask them to do it until January. And finally, we froze, or delayed, or whatever you want to call it, capital projects in the amount of $1.9 million. For the new budget year, I won't get into too much detail, but we've also asked departments to reduce their budget 2% over the current fiscal year, and that's 2% for the entire year. We've also reduced, recommending that we reduce capital expenditures from $5 million to $3 million, $5 million is the normal amount that we allocate for general fund capital projects. And all that information will be coming to you again. We'll be done with the budget in late April, and it'll be presented to you in early May. At the first study session in May is normally when we give you the budget overview. So with that, I'd like to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
No questions, just very thorough report and just what I was looking for. Thank you.
One quick question. Later on in our agenda, there is a request by the city attorney to spend a whole bunch more money on outside council. Does that, does that change the view of your staff report on where we are with our budget?
Doesn't change my view on where we are with revenues. Changes a little bit on where we are with reserves. I believe that, that request that you will review, we're recommending that that be taken out of the operating reserves that have been built up over prior fiscal years.
The operating contingency account.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Des.
Thank you.
Okay, that's receive and file also. So our next item is number 14, Proposed Budget Amendment Regarding Outside Council Expense.
You didn't have number 13 unless--
Oh, I'm sorry.
Unless you want to just go past that one, that's all right with me.
I was scribbling on my agenda here. Number 13, Council Review of Status Progress Report on Seven of the City Council's 2009 Priorities.
Freudian slip, actually. Why am I so honest? It comes back to haunt me. Well, the city council certainly knows the routine, because you've been through it enough times. The council priorities were set at a meeting in early January. In February, I came back with a list of steps that would implement the priorities for this calendar year. And then, starting in March, we review the priorities and give you a status report of where we are. Dave, this thing isn't moving here.
Too many, too much infrastructure between you and the issue.
Okay, in no particular order. The first one is continue to seek and implement measures to minimize the adverse impacts of John Wayne Airport through the implementation of the city council's airport policy. I know that this is really hard to read, but aviation committee meetings are taking place as usual. Our next one is next Monday. Hold five corridor city meetings. This has not been met, looking at holding the first meeting in April, and I know that's important, but we've had some real problems in trying to get the city managers and city attorneys together, and we think we'll be able to do that next month. Councilwoman Dagel talked about an air quality study. We are proceeding with a peer review. City of Costa Mesa is, will probably consider sharing the cost with us if we move forward, so that is a good thing. One of the steps was to begin a regional dialogue with other airport operators, including Lawa. A meeting has been set with the executive director. I have that scheduled for early April, so should be able to report back in May as to whether there are other discussions and whether that looks fruitful. I think one step is that Costa Mesa continues to be actively involved in the Citizen Aviation Committee. They're sending council members. Although you might have noticed today, Don Lamb, who is the Costa Mesa staff member, is the new city manager who was named by the city council of Westminster last night. So he will be leaving Costa Mesa and becoming a city manager, so--
Well, that's a big loss to Costa Mesa and to our aviation committee. I thought it'd be just a great move to include Costa Mesa at our meetings. They, you know, Don's been helping out with the workload and also the council members, so--
I agree with you. He was very interested, and I thought he was going to be good for the issues for a long time to come. The city staff has met with the city of Anaheim, reviewing their Arctic project, and we have pledged our support in any way that we can. The Arctic staff came and met with the Citizen Aviation Committee on February the 23rd, so we are dialoguing with them. The last one is a new step. I think it came from Councilman Rosansky, and I worded it, "Engage South County Cities in a JWA issued dialogue in order to create greater political support for an eventual settlement agreement extension." And the way that I measured this action is, by the end of the calendar year, obtain support from five additional cities for continued limitations on John Wayne Airport. So I said that a little ambitiously. So here we are, almost three months through, but I hope that fulfills what your thinking was.
Does that mean you need to go five for five, or five for 10? What's your batting average on that?
Well, South County Cities, they're probably about 14, but I think we're going to pick the ones that are closest to us and start there that maybe, you know, here are the planes more than the other cities do. If this is working, we will move to the second. I guess it's just a little slow. Continue the organizational performance improvement effort through the data gathering of performance measures, resulting in comparing the city's organizational effectiveness with other agencies, and also comparing it internally. Now, we were originally scheduled tonight to have a report, the final report from our ICMA consultants. They prepared a draft report, but they readily admitted that the March 24th date, tonight's date, in order to give the oral presentation and finalize the report, was too ambitious. The thinking now is that it may take another two or three months in order to do that. We expect that there will be a meeting with the council finance committee in order to review exactly what that final report is going to say. But one of the problems here is that the consultants just haven't found the comparable data, and there are a number of our 29 performance, not measures, but 29 benchmark services that, as far as the performance measures, could not be found. So they are looking very hard, and also, at the same time, they're undergoing a transfer of data and software. So they think that that conversion may be costing them a little data, so this is behind schedule. The next council priority is focus on the development and adoption of the 09-10 budget, which is balanced and which allocates the city's resources where they are most needed without adversely affecting services. You heard Mr. Danner's report, which was scheduled for tonight and took place tonight. Other, council is still on track to approve the budget on the 23rd. Two additional reports, like the one given tonight, will come to the council July 14th and October the 13th, in order to give you every three months a status report of how our major revenues are tracking. Next priority is update the facility's financing plan twice in 2009, in order to determine how best to finance Oasis and how best to move forward with the planning for City Hall and other priority projects. We had a committee meeting that was last Friday. The first draft of the facility's financing plan was reviewed by the committee. There will be another committee meeting in April then, in order to make a recommendation to the city council of what that draft plan will look like. So we're a little behind schedule on this, but certainly that facility's financing plan has hundreds and hundreds of pieces of data, and the first time it's seen, it takes a while in order to digest all of the movable parts. So as Councilman Curry said earlier, we think that the time to come back with the recommendations from the finance committee are during the budget review process. We think that makes good sense, and that timing should, should be good for us, with another approval probably somewhere in about the November timeframe. Next council priority is continue to enforce the city's group home regulations in order to minimize the impacts on residential neighborhoods, and I'm going to ask for Dave Kiff to provide this overview.
Thank you, Homer. Mr. Mayor and council, this page does summarize where we are. We have processed all the remaining use permit applications, including your discussion tonight. Thanks to the city attorney's help, we have sent out abatement letters to the about 12 facilities that did not file for either use permits or reasonable accommodation, and are confirming the closure of a number of those. We haven't confirmed that any of them are open. It's, we do that both with code enforcement and some additional investigation on our part. There is a, are two bills in the legislature that we're following. SB 268 with Senator Harmon is a bill sponsored by the city. AB 1284 by Democratic Assemblyman from the Bay Area, Marin County. Mr. Huffman is also somewhat helpful, so we'll follow these bills. The first, the Harmon bill is set for hearing in its first committee coming up in April. We are enforcing the ordinance. As noted, there have been no new homes attempting to come in besides an ADP license, six and under, that's, is attempting to get a license. So I think generally the protections within the ordinance are being adhered to and respected. We have begun enforcement of the Sober Living by the Sea Settlement Agreement, because that, aspects of that took effect on March 10th. And then, we are underway, as Mr. Hen mentioned, with our reasonable accommodation process. That's a challenging one, but an important one within the process. And then, defense against the city's litigation is ongoing as well. One of the reasons that some of the reasonable accommodation hearings have taken longer is a lot of us are in deposition and deposition prep for a large case with Pacific shores recovery.
If there are no questions, we will go to the next priority, which is continue the alignment of the city's codes, regulations, and policies with the general plan. Sharon is going to walk us through these statuses.
I have a couple of updated dates to what you see on the screen there. We are still anticipating that the general plan, LCP Implementation Committee, will complete its review of the draft zoning code by April 15th. But the Planning Commission hearing date in July was based on an assumption that staff and the consultants would make the changes that the committee had asked for so far, and take the next public review draft directly to the commission. However, the committee has decided that they would like to go through it one more time, so that's probably going to push the Planning Commission hearings till September. And then, the next one, the coastal land use plan, we have been kind of on again, off again, with our next hearing before the coastal commission for them to take the final action on the language. And the screen tells you it's June, but we just learned today that we're back on the April agenda, so hopefully that will hold, and we'll have that one resolved more quickly. We are preparing responses that we received from HCD on our housing element in preparation for certification, and that's taking us a long time, because what they asked for is a great amount of detail on the housing sites that we have available, which was pretty disappointing to staff, because we thought with the general plan update offering more housing opportunities than our former housing element had, that that would have been satisfactory. But instead, they're asking for a great amount of detail on each and every site, and so that's taking us some time to pull together.
Would it be possible for our response letter to come to council before it goes off to HCD?
Before it goes, sure.
Okay, thanks.
The, the NEXA study for the fair share fee and the infrastructure and potential fee for streetscape improvements in the residential area, the air-- for streetscape improvements in the residential area of the airport, I think will not be affected by the committee taking another look at the zoning code because we're expecting to bring those to the committee at the end of April, early May, while the zoning code will be back in the hands of the consultants and the staff to make the revisions. So May may be a little optimistic for fee adoption, but I think we'll still be able to get some policy direction from the committee on those two things in April, early May. I'm sorry? And the others will become forward on the dates that are indicated.
Moving to the last priority we will review tonight. That's reduce the fire hazard and lower bug gully in order to provide heightened fire security protection. Chief Lewis is in the audience, but I think the key statement is down here. We extended our timeframe by two months and eight's objective to reflect our need to allow the state farm marshal adequate time to finish their two projects on this. The two projects are completion of the statewide hazardous designation maps by the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection. And Steve, as I understand it, those maps are done at different times for different areas of, of the state, and ours is under preparation right now as far as Orange County. And then, upon completion of the Senate Bill 1595, then there are some compliance guidelines that will be established, so we think that that's a, will trail the, the map completion by about a month, and then the city council gets into action after that, as far as actions that you would take. So unfortunately, the first two steps were kind of dependent upon some other agencies' timeframes. We will monitor that, but there isn't very much we can do about it. So that concludes the first seven. The next six will be coming to you, then at the second meeting next month, and then every two months thereafter.
Okay. Any questions, city manager? Seeing none, now we can go on to item 14, which is the proposed budget amendment regarding outside council expense.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I began three months ago trying to get a handle on a number of different issues throughout the office of the city attorney, one of which was our use of outside council to get a feel for where we were in our tasks, where we were with respect to the particular projects they were performing, and where we were with respect to the expense involved. I've reviewed all of the matters, and I've also been reviewing bills. I've been through bills up through February. I've received a report that you, that through March of, the first week in March, in which the data was drawn from, and which I used to prepare and forecast the balance of the year regarding expenses. It became clear from looking at the billings and for what was approved through midway through the year. Now, the only payments post mid-year, post January 1st was made on January 16th, so these are all bills incurred for services halfway through the year, showed that we were under, underforecast the amount of fees in which we would need in order to complete the year and complete what effectively are four council initiatives or significant initiatives identified by council. I've identified amounts that I believe will be necessary to achieve budget reconciliation for the balance of the year, based upon how much that we've incurred midway through the year, and based upon where I see the different projects involved. It's a total of $742,000 that I'm recommending that we augment the different budgets for outside council expense, and let me explain that. Effectively, outside council expense, while actually can be drawn from many different budget categories, are drawn from three primary categories or line items. Two within the office of the city attorney and one within our general services fund. The, the two in the office of the city attorney, we call the 880 account, and the other's the 884. 880 is our professional consultants outside council expense. It has a combination of actual experts, consultants, and attorney's fees, and a report from that particular budget line item breaks these down by vendor, not by item. That showed that we were actually going to exceed our budget. Certainly, we had expended at, by that time, $331,000 with $345,000 in the budget. The, go on to where we were with respect to 884. That is services for litigation. It's been traditionally used, and like, going back to the services and the invoices paid, they were going to code enforcement initiatives into Alshai and Winder, along with Woodrow Spradlin and Smart, who, they do our primary code enforcement work. We'd expended $107,000 up through mid-year, went to a $100,000 budget. The third is the general services, the 6021 budget. That was set aside in order to cover essentially the group homes issues involved of that amount that were actually budgeted. We'd exceeded, we were on the, we were on the precipice of exceeding that amount. We, forgive me, let me grab that spreadsheet. We had budgeted $250,000. We had actually expended just under $250,000, but there was $123,000 that was approved by me in February for payment that were actually incurred in the first half of the year, plus there was additional funds that were paid out of other budgets for that particular line item, resulting in approximately $400,000 worth of fees incurred with respect to that particular issue. From that, and knowing where we are, for example, in our 880 budget, we are handling two primary, two primary areas of initiatives. One is with respect to the IBC litigation. We use Remy Thomas. They also have to defend us on the BEAC case, and so we've got that happening out of that budget item, as well as the Eelgrass Initiative, which includes our experts as well as Latham and Watkins. Latham and Watkins, we'd spent $109,000 on for the first half of the year. As to the IBC issues, I know this isn't going away. We have two matters on appeal. Our appellate briefs will be due by, before the end of the fiscal year. Appellate briefs are going to cost us somewhere in the vicinity, would be my guess, 30 grand each because of the nature of these proceedings. We have the HCG case pending. The administrative record has just been certified. That means our briefing schedule will come forward, and we'll have to brief before the end of the year. So I forecast to go into the actual IBC fund and the expense of the IBC, along with the BEAC litigation, because that's Remy Thomas, at $150,000. As to the BEAC litigation, what's going on is, is that we're entering into a briefing schedule that we'll have to complete before the end of the year. The hearing on the matter is due on June 15th, so briefing and resolution at the trial court level, this is the workload that, that we'll be facing. I've estimated approximately 30 grand in that effort as well. So those are the issues there. We also have the BEAC election issues. It's on briefs in the Court of Appeal. I've estimated $30,000 to fix, fix the Court of Appeal. Eelgrass, we have a situation where, as you all know, we brought our proposal to the federal regulatory agencies. There was a conference held three weeks ago, four weeks ago, in which it wasn't presented the way that we see it. Other work is going to be needed in that area to best set up our Eelgrass proposal and issues, so I've estimated $30,000 for that. Latham and Watkins has already expended 100, we've already expended $109,000 on Latham and Watkins. I thought that was appropriate. So total amount, plus $2,000 to telecom and cable. Total amount to that budget line item of $292,000, I believe, will cover all of that. Now, there's been asked, and appropriately so, is some of that reimbursed to us in that line item because we're sharing the cost of the IBC litigation with Tustin? The answer is, I don't know. I haven't been able to get that answer for that. I don't see in the actual reports that I have any credit going back into that area. I don't know where that credit goes. I do know they actually pay us, and I apologize for not being able to run that down since that question was asked for me. I wish I'd thought of it in the first place. I can tell you that I'm making different recommendations during that upcoming budget process in order to better break out these fees, so I can have a better view of that. They'll be broken into more specific specialty litigation types of areas, so I can govern exactly where we're spending it. In addition, what we've done is, in our city law program, we can actually enter invoices to specific projects, and so we haven't been able to catch up on that. My goal was to have this fiscal year in already. We don't, but hopefully by the time we go to budget hearings, we'll have this fiscal year in. So I can attribute actual costs to, say, for example, Eelgrass, or IBC, or whatever, group homes initiatives to specific cases, so we can do a direct comparison of results expense. Right now, we can't do that. All I can do is by vendor and account item, which includes a number of different things. So 880, I was recommending $292,000 be placed in. As to 884, that's our code enforcement. As I said, they've expended, we've expended $107,000. We have approximately 30, 30 to 33 pending code enforcement matters for eight inactive litigation, and approximately 26 that are poised for litigation. We've changed some of our procedures that should reduce the amount of money in outside council costs. We're retaining some of the matters in-house, doing the first step toward code enforcement, sending out the first sort of drop dead letters, so to speak, or the last of the drop dead letters, prior to actually being signed out. We'll sign out after we have clear lack of compliance. So I'm hoping to begin with drawing some of that expense back in-house, although we're not currently staffed to do the litigation ourselves. Thank you, by the way, for the approval and the consent agenda. That will help us be able to start catching up on that. Since we've expended $107,000 through the half, midway through the year, and since I don't see a drop-off in code enforcement expense, I've asked for $100,000 to go toward, excuse me, $150,000 to go to that budget. The reason why I asked for more than $100,000 is, is we have the initiative for, which you've authorized for the civil code enforcement matters, to go against group homes that would have to be abated. At the time, I had 11 that were pending, we'd sent out drop dead letters on. We have confirmation that certainly nine are no longer functioning as best we can identify. We've got one that's, that's still, we're trying to nail down, and the 11th is already in actual enforcement proceedings based upon a boarding house ordinance situation. So I see another initiative coming, plus a second tier, the not-so-low-hanging fruit, as we've called it, will still need to go out and pursue, so I've given ourselves a bit of a buffer, adding in about $30,000 to $40,000 to do that kind of work over the balance of the year. You've previously authorized us to use Woodrow Spradlin. They've achieved some very good results for us in many different forums, and I think they're the most cost-effective way to make that work for us at this point. And lastly, with respect to the general services fund, it's 6021 budget line item. We had previously budgeted $250,000, a total of approximately $459,000 has been expended up through the balance of the year. As you've already received knowledge, we're in significant depositions in Pacific shores. We're deeply involved and almost finished with, but I haven't approved the bills yet for, all of our use permit hearings, and we still have reasonable accommodation to get through. Richard Watson is obviously critical to that effort, and they put in yeoman's labor in trying to get this work done as best they can for the city. We are involved as the office of the city attorney. We have, I basically have one, one attorney staff member dedicated to this effort for the last two months. It's a part-time staff. Kathy Walcott is, we can get other work out of her sometimes. She, she works very hard, but she's, she's a group home person extraordinaire in our office. So based upon the fact that we've expended well over $400,000 and approved the first half of the year, and it isn't getting any lighter between now and the end of the fiscal year, we're recommending a $300,000 augmentation of that budget. And if you have any questions, I will be very happy to address. Oh, let me just, the forecast next year, just a tad. I've looked at this situation, I've looked at where we are. I've put together numbers that we've discussed. While we suggest we're going to be coming to you with a restructuring of our budget line items for outside council, it's, I mean, it's something small, but I've actually reduced from 2% what I thought it would cost if we didn't increase. It's a big number because I'm using actual forecasted funds based upon attorney's fees, but the 2%, we've come up with a 2% reduction from what I think we're going to end up spending this year for next year's budget. So with that...
Including the $700,000?
Pardon? Including that $700,000 augmentation, yes.
So we're, the augmented budget, we're going to be 2% less next year?
Yes.
Okay.
It's 2% less than 100% increase.
Yes.
I just, I just had one question.
My ex-wife used to shout that way.
Do you have a CPA degree?
Negative, negative, but Excel is a wonderful program.
Well, because I think Dennis Danner could use some help, you know?
Oh, he's better at this than I am.
With all those budget numbers that you have committed to your memory for that explanation, so...
I move the recommended action. I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Please vote.
We asked for the public.
Well, anybody from the public that's not here want to speak?
Motion carries.
Records show no public was here. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, we're adjourned.
Mr. Mayor?